And welcome to this session on Loom. Here we'll be talking about editing, enhancing and interacting. This for me is where it'll get a little bit probably more interesting than jokingly just pushing a record button. And that is a large part of Loom making the recordings. For me though, I spend a ton of time doing things beyond that, mainly focusing on things like how do I optimize the video? How do I get rid of? Maybe the mistakes or the little ums and the uhs that you hear me do quite a bit when I'm live. So I'll give folks a couple of moments to jump on it and join us. But while we're going, I'll drop a quick poll. Just to see if folks attended the first session, which we had last Friday at around this time at around this place. So just curious if folks were able to make the first session of Loom Essentials. That's the ACA nine thirty is the exam designation. And so far, one hundred percent of one respondents missed the first session. Absolutely no worries if you could not make it. It is recorded. It should be in this playlist. I can put a link and also briefly touch on it. We'll do a little review of last week before we dive into next week. Let me go find that link real quick while I'm thinking about it. And then we will get started with this week's content. Here we go. In case you missed it. I see why am I in case you missed it. Think I got that right. Just a short lazy way of writing out longer things. Alright, and if y'all can give me a quick thumbs up if you can hear me or not. I'm seeing people in here voting, which is good. So that means the stream is working. So I'm gonna jump in and get started. I did run into a brief hiccup with YouTube, so I'm glad we are here. And also I forgot to put in my usual welcome. Quick introduction in case you don't know who I am or haven't been in one of my sessions. My name is Rob. I've been using Atlassian products since about twenty thirteen and I never had any training in any Atlassian product. I was just told this is Confluence or this is Jira or we have Loom. And that's my experience with Loom. I joined a company that had it and I was asking, how do I make how to articles? I need to make videos. And someone said, we've got this thing called Loom. And I said, what is Loom? And they pretty much just showed me how to make a video and that was it. Since then, or since I started using Atlassian, I've earned numerous certifications and I am essentially a professional trainer. My goal is to make sure folks, just like all of you, don't have to suffer or feel frustrated figuring out or learning how to use these systems. Tools like Loom help make our lives a lot easier. If we don't know how to use them though, they can be frustrating. So that's my why. That's why I do this. Now please use the chat to interact. It's over my left shoulder. It should be over there for most people if you're on desktop. Use that to put in your questions. Be on the lookout for polls like that one I asked about how did you attend the first session? And a couple of us have, which is great. Again, no worries if you haven't. But also use the chat to ask your questions. Let me know what you want me to dig into more or talk about or back up or share ideas. Also support each other. If you see a question or if you have something to share that's useful, please put it in chat. A large part of learning systems is finding a community of people who can help you out and I'll talk more about other resources as we go. Also, please like and subscribe. Again, I do this professionally. So hit the thumbs up button, subscribe to the channel if you haven't regular videos about Atlassian stuff. And you know how to use their products, regular live streams on various topics like this one. Next week I'm talking about credentials and how to improve Confluence and a whole bunch of stuff. And there we go. So a quick review of last week, we covered the basics of Loom and this mostly revolves around how do we use it to record content? And that is the major use case. I have an idea. I have something I want to share. How can I do that? And it's Loom is mainly all in the cloud. All the storage is in a cloud instance, our copy of Loom, but we can share within that. So our entire organization might be in Loom. And within our space, we have our own personal library, but we can also have spaces to share information. So I might share a workspace with all of you and be able to share all of my Loom tutorials. I might have a workspace just with my HR team and that shares all of my onboarding. Now there are three different platforms right now to record to Loom. There's the Chrome extension, which is mostly what I'll demonstrate in these trainings, just because it's easiest. There is a desktop app though, as well as a mobile app. And for our purposes, we need to understand there are slight differences between these three platforms. For example, the extension allows me to blur things on the screen while I'm recording. The desktop does not. However, the desktop allows me to do things like record my mouse clicks. So there are features that exist in one or the other, but not both. And we need to be aware of that, especially if we're planning on earning the certification, the Loom Essentials. We have to know which platform can do what. Now another thing is just very easy to record. And this to me is one of the best use cases. Prior to using Loom, I mainly used QuickTime, the program on my Mac, just because I had it. And that required me to create a file, download the file, edit it in an editor and then upload it somewhere else. Loom, I can just record and it can integrate seamlessly into different platforms. So that is the very short version of everything we covered last week, cramming an hour into about a few minutes. But taking a quick look at our exam, thirty-six percent is how do we create and edit? So we'll talk a lot about creating and editing. And then talk a bit about sharing and collaboration. How do we take what we've got and give it to other people? My main focus today will be mostly on the editing capabilities, what different features exist within Loom once we create something? And how can we as content creators and editors then edit it down? Again, a great feature. It does not require separate software. It's a very simple editing experience compared to other things I've used. So we're gonna pop into Loom. What we're looking at here and I'll drop a screenshot. This is the official learning path. This is what the people at Atlassian think that we as learners need to know about Loom. This is also what shows up on that exam if we're intending on earning the ACA nine thirty Loom Essentials. So this is the basis of where I go to study and look for things. I'll be going back and forth between this and Loom. Now I'm gonna be using the Loom business tier that includes all the AI bells and whistles. And keep in mind, if you're on the free tier, you don't have access to the waveform editing. Just as a heads up, so you can follow along to a point. I'm just gonna open up edit and enhance. And I think I want to go to improve lighting, sound, etc. Now this is a feature that exists within my desktop app. So if I'm using the Chrome extension, I can't use this and I'll show you what this looks like in a minute. But there are some features again, right out of the box, right on the tin that helped me fix things like lighting, noise and my own appearance. I have a nice studio at home. I can control my lighting. I have smart bulbs that let me change the colors and whatever. Most people don't have that. And so Loom has some, I can't, I'm not gonna call them AI tools. They have some tools that help things. Like make it look a bit brighter if it's too dark, that help get rid of weird background sound. For example, I have a fan going right now that hopefully is being filtered out. And but Loom has these three features that are built in to the desktop app that help make your videos look and sound and feel better. And this is really important when we're dealing with a recording. When COVID first happened, I upgraded my mic. It's one of the first things I did because I was on a lot of calls and I wanted people to hear me better. And the mics in our laptops are great, but this is much greater. Same thing here. These three features on the desktop app make my video feel a bit more polished and help the content and help the message get through. It can sound a bit silly, like you know, fixing the lighting, the noise and whatever. But every little bit helps when we're communicating through just a video. We can also blur out parts of the screen. Now this can be useful. Again, this is found in the, actually, let me just show you the touch up real quick. So this is my desktop app that we're seeing and I have to zoom out so you can see everything. I've got some ugly folders on my desktop. Excuse me. Let me get rid of these. Whee! There we go. Effects. I always forget where this is. I mainly use my what am I looking for here? Cloud recorder. So I'm mainly using the extension. And I'm just gonna click this video.
In this short video, I'm gonna show.
These learning paths are great. They have again, everything you need and all of the videos to show you. Okay, camera bubble. Ah, the three dots. So here I've got touching up my appearance. I'll see if I can make myself even bigger. So the bubble in the middle is my Loom and this should. Am I less wrinkly? If you look closely, a lot of my, my forehead lines are getting smaller. Here we go. So again, touching up smooths out my facial features a little. Lighting, you can see makes it a bit brighter if it feel like it's too dark. And the noise filter will take the audio and clean it up a bit. So again, these are not considered AI tools. These are considered like touch up and enhancements. And this is an important differentiation. I'll talk about AI tools in a minute. And maybe I'll get off the screen so you don't have to stare at two of me. But again, it makes it look and feel a little bit better. I tend to use the Chrome extension because I'm lazy and it's right up here at the top of my screen at all times. But the desktop app does have those touch ups. We can blur areas. Now this works in the Chrome extension. I use this. When I'm recording, I can click on blur. And you'll notice it's selecting areas of the screen. And when I click on them, it's going to apply a blur to those areas. Now this isn't just in case there is some kind of sensitive content on your screen. I always recommend don't record sensitive content just to be super safe. But if you have to for some reason, you can blur out chunks of your screen to hide that information. So my best practice is not to need to use this just because I try not to record something sensitive, but we can if we need to. Only available in the Chrome extension, just as a heads up. Getting rid of the controls is another thing that I do quite a bit when we're recording. I'm quickly just gonna start recording. You'll see my, my bubble in the bottom left and I've got this little control panel dearly. In cloud, I can even pause and keep blurring stuff. So if I realize as I start, I can blur things out. This can be captured in the recording though, which can be very annoying. So we do have options for hiding the.
I'm going to show you how to.
If we need to. Now in this example is done through the desktop. But I like to get rid of these when I'm sending, say, an update to a stakeholder, someone who I don't want to be distracted by those. I also find them visually distracting sometimes, having that little control bar. So I try to get rid of it. Now you can do this in both desktop and in the Chrome extension. So if I open this thing up under more and settings, I have show and hide recording controls. That Loom also does screenshots only on the desktop. The nice thing about the screenshots is it drops them all in the cloud. I tend to take screenshots on my desktop. It dumps them straight on my desktop and then my computer ends up just cluttered with a bunch of stuff. Available in the desktop app only. You can also remap it to a hotkey. I go back and forth with it. My default is just to use the built-in screenshotting tool, but honestly, I like doing it in Loom because it drops it into my Loom library. If I go into Loom, I have a whole screenshot library where they're just recorded. Makes it easier to find later. It makes it much easier to share. I don't have to update it into a Confluence page or something. Alright, so that was some of the other features we've got. The smoothing and the touch up stuff, again, only on desktop, the visual blurring only gonna show up on what am I looking for here? Chrome extension. I've got another quick poll and I need a little quick coffee break. Just how frequently do you find yourself using Loom? Personally, especially when I had my corporate job, I was using it all the time because I would again, make a lot of how to articles. I would create a lot of like project updates. And I would send out to my team. And I actually had like the COO respond, this is amazing. I love the video. It's like, oh, great. That works. And so it's got a lot of very, in my mind, obvious use cases to help people understand what's going on. And that's where engaging is important. So there are some features we have that make the video more engaging and make it easier for people to think, oh, this is interesting. I want to jump in. I don't use all of these. I'll be honest. And this might just be my lack of habit. And also my lack of knowing these features exist. And this is one reason I do these trainings. It's not just to help all of you, the fifteen people learning with me. It's to help myself. And so far, most of us don't use Loom at all. I love it. Thank you for joining us. And I, again, I'm just chuckling there because I didn't use Loom before. I was just told that's your option. That's all you have. We can do, they call it a canvas. So I'll go into my recording. And I have an effects button and I can do things like change the background behind my head. You can blur it. I tend to just do none because I have this nice background. But I also have this canvas feature. What this lets me do is imagine this is a, think like an opening title slide to a presentation. I wouldn't create a whole slide deck in here, but I could use canvas to tee up what I'm gonna talk about. You know, here's our weekly project update. And then I, hey team, thank you so much for joining me. Our weekly project update for the week of November fourteenth is starting. And then I would open a tab or move on to the content. There's some different templates. I also have different text layouts. Again, more like a slide. I wouldn't necessarily build a entire deck in here, but it just tees up information. And then I've got these backgrounds. So just something I can have going on behind what I'm recording that looks a little bit more interesting. Again, it can make things more visually appealing and this makes it more likely someone's gonna want to actually watch and listen to what I'm talking about than otherwise. And that's in both Chrome and desk, extension and desktop. We've also got a drawing tool. This for me is great. It lets us put like text in arrows and icons on the screen. So I'm just gonna, I'll just record this. Perfect. I'll just click start recording and making a recording is as simple as just what we saw. You just push a big red start button. You pick what you want to record. In this case, this screen. Now you can record just one window or just one particular tab in Chrome. Did I make a whoopsie? Where's my drawing tool? Let me back up. I will find my Loom desktop. Here we go. Alright, here I have my drawing tool that lets me put images on the screen, a heart, just drawing with my hand. This I use to visually point things out. So I might say, hey, the start button is here. Down here you have your bubble. I have my settings under more. So I've used this one. I need to call attention to things. Again, I'm creating a how to document. I want to make sure my team knows where things are. Prior to this, I would have to download the video and edit it. And many editors support that, but in the desktop app, I can record it and write in the recording, add all of the information I need. Again, helping make it more engaging, helping direct people towards what they need or what I feel like they need. The desktop app also records mouse clicks. I like this honestly. It'll have a little animation and then a clicking sound. This only works in the desktop. I use this for more complex technical recordings where I have to make it very obvious where should you click? You know, click here, click here. Sometimes if I'm on the Chrome extension, I'll just say, and click on this button, like I'll say it out loud. But recording the mouse clicks is another great way to do it. I'm gonna kind of breeze through some of these. You can add music, background music. I haven't done this personally. I tend, you know, the things I make tend to maybe be a bit drier or a bit more corporatey, but you can add a backing track to things. My friend Rodney here is in chats. A quick shout out to Rodney. He's known as the, literally the Jira guy is his moniker. So if you need Jira help, an amazing expert and a very friendly guy. He's hanging out in our Discord channel right there. But he's half joking. I only use Loom when I remember it exists. This is an interesting comment and for me, it's like every tool. I didn't use Loom until I was told what it was. And then I had to make it part of my habit. Loom, like any tool, you know, has a great, a lot of utility and features, but we have to incorporate it into our workflows. I remember my mom worked in a big company and they wanted to do social media. They said like Facebook. And she told me it's never gonna work if you don't make it part of somebody's daily workflow. So think of any tool you use. It might be the best tool in the world. But it might not work very well if you don't incorporate it into your habit, if you don't tell your team about it. We can make confetti appear. I personally haven't done this, but it throws a little fake confetti over the video. So this is some of the things we can do to make videos more engaging. Again, some of those features desktop only, some just in Chrome. But now I'm gonna move on to editing and this is where I spend a lot of my time. I will make a recording and the best advice I can give you on recording is just record. If you make a mistake, don't worry about it. Just keep going. Because if you're in something like Loom, you can go cut out the mistakes. It also helps your train of thought. It makes it easier for you to continue talking if you keep stopping and restarting. So if you just keep going, you'll probably get a better take. And you also get more content. You can cut them together in different ways. You'll see this term waveform. And this is talking about a visual representation of the audio in the video. Here I have a big, long, four-minute video. And if I go to edit, I can click edit and enhance. And then along the bottom, I have this blue looking wavy thing. This blue looking wavy thing is the waveform and this is what I use to visually figure out what's happening when I'm, I'm going. Many times when I record, if I make a mistake, I'll clap or I'll, I'll snap. And that shows a spike in the waveform. That tells me, ooh, the mistake is here. Other times I'll look for just flat lines. If we look very, very closely at the end, there's this weird little tail. That tells me maybe I can chop that off. So I can use the waveform to figure out where should I go. You'll also notice in the text, this red highlight and that's where I'm looking at. That's where my playhead is, this red line. And that's also visually showing me what's happening, but I can use this waveform to understand where am I in the video and then what do I want to cut out? I'm gonna drop another quick poll. I'm just curious. It around, it's around video editing. I started to learn how to edit videos when I started making learning courses and a quick shout out the, oh, my head is tiny. Why am I so small? Well, there we go. Why did no one say my head was so small? I started making my own learning courses and I had to become my own editor. So that QR code in the bottom right will take you to my learning site, learn.teen.tech. Lots of learning courses here, mostly around Atlassian content, especially around certification. So please check that out. Another great way to support me in addition to hitting the like button on the video. But I had to learn how to edit video and that was frustrating and challenging. Loom does a very good job of simplifying it. So I'll show us how we can edit things as we go and this waveform and this transcript is the building blocks of that. Now we can easily trim the video, remove pieces we don't want, either from the start or the end or from the middle. So looking at my video, let's see if I can find one that is complete. I've already edited that one. I've chopped out some things. So I'm gonna just go back, go to my library where my videos are and find one that hasn't been edited yet. Now this one is nine seconds long. Perfect. So in, down at the bottom, I've got this little blue handle and I can just drag this to shorten the video. So I can trim off the end. I do that very frequently because usually the end of the video, I'll be staring at the camera blankly for a minute or kind of like looking around. Or I trim off the start and I have the same handle I can grab. Come here. Because usually I'll have a couple of seconds of like clicking around or looking. But chopping off that little bit at the start, that's a little bit awkward, helps a lot. Think of any video, any learning, online learning, maybe you've attended where the first couple of seconds, the host like me is kind of staring blankly or isn't organized. If you see that first, it's harder to engage. So by chopping out those little bits, it makes it much easier or much more likely someone will engage. So that's the waveform editor. We can also edit with the text itself. So in this very short video, I've got some words. I can see a two seconds. This is a silence. So the editor is showing me, hey, we've detected a two-second break where you didn't say anything. I can select it and then just delete it. And you'll notice in the waveform, there's now a gap. So that's showing me the editor, hey, the video is gonna play until here and then it's gonna skip all the way to here. You'll notice though, it didn't remove it from the file. It's just taking it off of this part. And so far, half of us are very comfortable with editing. I love that. Now forty percent. I can bring this back by restoring it as well. So if I realized whoops, I actually need that. I can also go chop out individual words. And you'll notice I have this replace audio. I do have options with AI to try and replace a mistake. For example, if I mispronounce a word, if I say the wrong word, I can go in here and try and correct it using AI. Now the AI features we see are based on a tier of Loom. So you may not have them unfortunately, but they do exist in the broader Loom and they do make editing a lot quicker because instead of having to re-record, I can just come in here and switch out the word approval instead of approvals with an S, for example. But I can use the transcript to quickly delete and I can select multiple words. Should be able to. There we go. And delete entire chunks if I need to. So again, it's a very simple process of kind of click and then click delete. I use a much more powerful editing tool for my videos and I really appreciate how simple and approachable Loom has made it. I can just go in and chop out the words I don't want. Now we can stitch multiple videos together. For example, if I record the start of one video, I can then stuff it on or stitch it onto another video. I can't currently insert something in the middle of another video. So what I could do is I could record the opening to a video and then I could insert it somewhere else. But I, just at the start or the end, but I couldn't replace this two seconds of silence, for example. This two seconds of silence, excuse me, with an entirely separate video. So all I can do right now is append or post-append new stuff. That is useful if you record an opening and you go, oopsies, I really need to change this. I didn't mean to do that. Or if you want to add a new ending, again, you realize you forgot something or maybe the, the recording wasn't as strong as you wanted. Now while you're recording, you might realize you make a mistake. The Chrome extension, they call it live rewind. And I'll just start a recording to demonstrate this. I'll be honest, I have never used this feature. And it's just because I'm not familiar with how it works and I really should not use that as an excuse. But I've got this little rewind icon in the, in the control bar. And if I push this, it should give me, oh, come on, Loom. It will give me the ability to trim out mistakes in the live recording if it loads. And then return to the recorder and continue recording. So if I realize I make a mistake, I can back up the video, record over the mistake and then keep going. Here we go. So I might trim off, I might delete three seconds of the video or six seconds. I said, ooh, I don't like that. I said the wrong thing. I clicked on the wrong place. I don't have to wait to finish a video. I can just chop it out right now. Then hit play again and re-record that piece like it never happened. I like that this feature exists. Again, my weakness is I'm just not used to using it. It's not part of my workflow. And that's where I just need to remember I have access to this great tool. I should actually go use it. We can add a button into the video itself as well. They call this a call to action. Call to action is just a generic term that incentivizes someone to do something. My call to action in this video is for you all to click on that QR code at the bottom or go look at my learning site, which is in the chat. There's an action I want you to do and I, I say, go do this thing. In Loom, we can put a button on our videos that support that. Now down at the bottom, this is the same video we just edited, under take action. I have some different things I can do. I could make a Confluence page if I use Confluence or I've got this link. Now the AI that runs in Loom is suggesting, hey, you mentioned Atlassian. If I hadn't mentioned something though, it wouldn't ask, it wouldn't suggest anything, but the AI is guessing. Maybe this is what you wanted to add. But I could have this button go anywhere. Maybe I want to go to learn.teen.tech. Oopsies. And instead of it saying the word Atlassian, you know, learning courses. I can change the color. I can change when it shows up the whole time, just part of the time. You might add a button like this. And then when someone clicks on it, it takes them to whatever URL you wanted. A button like this could take someone to a more in-depth analysis of your project report. A button like this could take someone directly to the system they are learning how to practice in. A button like this could take a new hire to your team's page. They understand more about the company. Again, it's just any URL you have. So this is a very useful feature because it puts it in context. I don't have to verbally tell someone, hey Rodney, thank you for watching my video. I don't have to verbally tell someone, hey, Rodney, thank you for watching my video. Now, could you go somewhere else and do a different thing to go find the thing I want you to have? Instead, it's just right there on the screen and people can just click it and go. You can always come back and change it as well. But I really like this feature just because it makes it very easy for me to send people somewhere I want them to go. There are a lot of examples in here. I'm not gonna go through all of them. You could link to a calendar booking page. You could link to software documentation. Again, there's no limit. It's more about where we want someone to be sent. Okay, now, when we record the video, Loom generates that transcript. If I go back to my video and I go into Edit, this is probably a terrible example. Let me go to a different example that actually has a transcript. We can use the transcript, and we kind of saw this while I was deleting. Here's a seven-minute video. Perfect. Go into Edit, Edit and Enhance Video. Rodney. Rodney has a great podcast called The Jira Life. His co-host Alex and him, as well as some others, actually other great folks, do a lot of good stuff on the Jira and Atlassian side of news. We briefly saw this, but I can use this transcript to edit down the video. So if I'm not comfortable with the waveform, if that's harder, I can correct the transcript. Now, Loom can also translate. This is something I haven't personally used. But Loom can convert your transcript into different languages. So it's not gonna change your audio. It's not gonna make you sound like you're speaking Spanish or Swahili or something. But it's gonna create different transcripts for you, which is nice. And again, anything we delete in here is just updated in every version of the transcript. So as a human editor, it makes it very easy to go in and just start chopping things out that I didn't want. All right, team. What questions do you all have? It's pretty quiet in the chat, which is totally okay. I've got about sixteen folks in here, which is amazing. I'm gonna drink some coffee and ask that folks hit that like button. It's the thumbs up somewhere down there, and then we'll just keep on rolling. All right. Now we're gonna dig into the AI tools. This is on a particular tier of Loom. And this is separate from the enhancements that we spoke about. So when we talk about AI tools, I am not talking about the desktop app, touch-up, auto lighting, and noise filter. So these are separate things. I call these like the touch-up features, you know, make me look and sound a little better. These are not considered AI tools. So I just need to be clear with that in the context of Loom, even though they might, you know, look and feel like an AI tool. Now, we, I'm seeing AI show up in Loom in the same way I'm seeing it show up in many places. It's the generative AI. It'll help do things like determine a summary for the video. What should the title be? We made this video. It'll automatically generate a name for it. Like every AI system, always double-check. You, the human, are responsible for its output. So please take time to review whatever the AI said and correct it, adjust it, change it. You can always do that as the human in charge. But it will automatically generate things for you. So if I go back to my big, long video, did it give me chapters in this example? This particular name I didn't create. It just gave it to me. And if we look very closely, it's really hard to see. But if I mouse over this, there's this little gap. That is a chapter. And if I scroll down, we can see there's two chapters: Introduction to Background, Conclusion, and Engagement. Now, this is Loom reading or going through the video and trying to identify where are obvious breaks or where are obvious changes in topics. I do this in YouTube, for example. When I'm recording a video, I'll have an introduction section, and then I'll have a section on the hands-on. But this will go through your video, excuse me, and then insert these chapters. I'll see if I can find a better one. Here we go. Perfect. This one has four chapters. Now, these chapters help someone find content more easily. You can see it's got a timestamp. And also you can link directly to them. So maybe Rodney doesn't need to know everything. He just needs to know the Jira macro for real-time updates. I can send him to that exact timestamp, and the AI is reading the video and doing that for me. We also get the language transl- excuse me, language translation. Fifty different transcriptions. So this is the on-screen text. Again, it doesn't change what you're saying. It just changes the transcript, so the subtitling that someone can go read. Excuse me. Now, there's a big caveat. The Loom mobile app and uploaded videos don't have that video transcript. So if I upload a video to Loom, which you can do, I record it somewhere else. Or if I record it on my phone, the transcript isn't created. So all of those AI tools that I just mentioned won't work or don't exist. So that's just something I was a little bit surprised by. I wouldn't have expected the mobile app to not do a transcript. But please just keep that in mind. So I wouldn't use Loom to translate a video I recorded somewhere else as an example. There are some basic AI editing tools. We also get a lot of the online AI editing tools that I've seen also do this, but removing the if, what we call filler words. You've heard me use them quite a bit during this training. They're just things that we as humans do. Even the best, I did one right there, even the best speaker will have these filler words as our brain takes a second to process. What I can see on the right, I'm gonna undo these filler words. But up in the top right, I can remove filler words and remove silences. So I'll just click on Undo. So if I click on this, it's gonna go through the video and find silences where there's just no talking, no noise, and remove them. So it would be the same as if I, as a human, went through the waveform and cut out silences. And then the filler words, I can just click, and it's gonna run through and try and find them all. And we can see right here, it'll strike them out and delete them from the transcript. And do the same thing in the waveform. All these little breaks are the filler words that the AI found for me. Again, as a human, I need to know what's going on. And if we watch this video, it'll skip.
Of Rovo, though. So just keep that in mind. Our Jira work items open, and you make-
So there was that brief skip because it's cutting out both the um and the ah and the video. So just keep in mind, it can make things feel a little bit jerky, depending on how many ums, uh's, ah's you're chopping out, but it can't sound better than having a bunch of the filler words show up. Now, we can use Loom to generate new content. And this is something that I, as a professional content creator, am looking into and examining more. But in the past, if I was making a how-to document, I would have to go type out a page and share that with people. And then I would have to go record a video and share that with people. And that takes time. That's not necessarily bad. It just means I have to go do two things. So Loom uses its AI to help us repurpose content. For example, I could record a how-to and then generate a Confluence page. Confluence is Atlassian's documentation, knowledge base, collaboration platform. You don't have to use it to use Loom, but it can generate documents directly in it. I can use it to generate a quick summary and then share a link to it with someone. And if I'm using Jira, Atlassian's work management tool, I can use Loom to generate a work item. So depending on what I'm doing, I can use Loom to take this video. And then down in the bottom right, I can generate a page. So I'll just show this example of creating, here we go, creating a Confluence page. Now, I have different templates or different types of pages I can make. It's gonna default to a SOP, but I might, I might pick a message or an email or a Q&amp;A steps or a PR description. And here I have in a few moments, I could drink a cup of coffee, take a walking break, whatever. I now have a page I can go create that both includes a step-by-step, identify this, do that, but also gives me bullet points and then screenshots and videos of those steps. As a human, this would take me a long time to figure out. And of course, as a human, I will review this to make sure it is accurate. But very quickly, I can get more useful content out of the things that I am recording. I really like that feature. Again, I spent a lot of time making documentation, or I used to. And so having a few buttons that I can click. And let me come back in here. I want my sidebar. I can come back in here. Generate. And I could do an email. Give me an email about this or a Slack message. So again, different ideas. Like, like all AI, just keep in mind, it can be non- non-accurate, I'll say. Now, the AI suite, those AI features, is part of the Business and Enterprise Plan. And I've mentioned these plans quite a bit. I think I know the URL. There are four tiers. Starter is free, has a lot of great features. You can have up to twenty-five videos, up to five minutes. There is a meeting recorder. So you can stick this in the meeting, in meetings, and have it record meetings for you. That's free on the free tier. Oh, you do get the transcriptions on free. Awesome. Stefan is saying in Confluence, again, the knowledge base, you don't have to use Confluence to use Loom. Just gonna be very clear. There are smart buttons. Yes, there are some new features we're seeing across the Atlassian stack, all of their things, to integrate Loom more tightly. And this makes a lot of sense because Atlassian makes both systems. So we're seeing the ability to record a bug directly on a work item in Jira using Loom. We're seeing the ability to make a Loom video and integrate it directly into a Confluence page using various features. This to me makes a lot of sense. Because if you're using some of these tools, you get more out of them by using more. But this is an entirely standalone platform. I'll just keep reminding folks of that. Now, on the business tier is where we get unlimited recordings and the basic editing. So being able to edit videos only pops in at the middle tier. That said, you can get a lot of utility out of the basic one or starter. The Business Plus AI is where you see those enhancements. So using the automatic titles and summaries, the more advanced editing, chopping out the ums and the ah's, video to text, the variables, auto-meeting notes, all the, all the more AIE stuff we usually think about. All right, going kind of fast. I've got one more section. I'm gonna take another quick sip of coffee and drop a quick poll. I can't spell. I also can't type these out in advance, which is annoying. Just curious if folks are intending on taking the ACA nine thirty. This is the Loom Essential Certification. I took this a few weeks ago before we started this series. Just to get a feeling for what is it like? What kind of things do we need to learn and know? Okay. And I should have explained this more as we went. I will talk about what this certification is right after we finish this section on watching and interacting. But hopefully more folks answer that, so I get a better directional idea of where people go. I will call out, if you want to take this exam or other Atlassian exams, my learning site does have certification vouchers available. So feel free to check those out or reach out to me. My email's in the bottom left. And I can hook you up with some learning and with a voucher at less than the full sticker price. Or at a good discount, I should say. Now, watching videos, very straightforward. You see me do this quite a bit.
Hey, Robert, love the questions. Thank you so much for responding.
Let me mute that. There we go. You'll see on screen, I'm getting these pop-up captions, and that's based on the transcript. So if I delete things from the transcript, those change. I also have things like changing the playback speed. You want to listen to me sound like a chipmunk? Go up to two and a half. Let me pull that down. I have different settings. What caption language? Ooh, Afrikaans. I've, I've never done this live. I'm curious to see how quickly and responsive this is. But you'll see up in the top, even it's saying auto-generated. And this is important because someone watching this will see the subtitle, telling them and making sure they understand that you didn't write this and a native language speaker didn't create, you know, the captions. Just lets them know, hey, there might be some mistakes. It might be wrong because the computer made a mistake. Other things like make it fullscreen. And here I have my Afrikaans subtitles in a few moments. Like any video player, essentially. We do have some interaction, though, and this is where, for me, Loom gets more interesting. Let's say we're watching this video and we think this part is amazing. We can do a little thumbs up. And that will be recorded in the timeline. And then other people will see that thumbs up. I could also comment directly right there. Great point about our system. And that drops the comment at that time in the video. This for me is very incredibly useful, very incredibly useful for asynchronous communication, because someone can tell me exactly what they mean about a specific point. This is hard in platforms that don't support this type of commenting or reactions. Because over time, you'll start to see where people, you know, react differently. Maybe there's a lot of thumbs down right here. You're gonna want to go and investigate. But the comments that show up exactly on a specific point have been very useful for me. I use them to get feedback on videos. I'll send an update to my manager or a teammate and say, what do you think of this? How can I improve it? And they can comment exactly where they think I should be doing something different or what they like. So letting people interact that way is great. We can respond to comments and view comments and follow them. So we can clearly see them. I can just click on them. And then in the activity log of the video, I'll see them down here at the bottom. You'll also see another AI feature, which is Tasks. So the AI tool has read the video and said, hey, I think there's a task, something you should follow up on. I'll just click Accept. And what you'll see in the video, more things along the timeline, these little checkmarks. Oh, right, that's to remind myself. I should go do these things. I can also add manual tasks if I need to. But I can also comment on the video. Again, this is making the video something that should be or that historically has been static and just sitting there, a more living, breathing way to interact and an easier way to share information because, because I can comment directly in a moment in time and tell someone something specific. We can also look at the transcripts. So as a viewer, I can go into the video. And up on the right, I've got a transcript button. And this will show me the transcript. So as a viewer, I can see this, and then I can click on this part, and it will take me to that part of the video. Now, you'll notice I can also change the language. I can search through it. I can copy the whole thing. So I can interact with the text of the video, which can be useful. And honestly, sometimes I just read the transcript because I feel like it's faster or easier. We can, we have our own Watch Later tab. So as I'm going through videos, I might save something for later. Honestly, I've never done that before. Let me go back to my library. Oh, has this just been running? Oops. But we can save videos. Oh, no, that was twenty-one minutes ago. Okay, it's not a twenty-one-minute video. We can save videos later in a Watch Later library. So I can tag them, and then they show up. Ooh, I kind of like that. All right, someone in the poll said they don't know what the ACA nine thirty is. So let me back up the train a little. Loom is a product created or currently owned by a company called Atlassian. Not what I wanted to go to. Now, this is one resource you should all just know about. This is Atlassian's community. This includes forums. So if you want to come in and chat with folks or share like forum posts about Loom or other Atlassian products, if you use them, if you're curious, if you're investigating, come in here. You do need to set up a free account with this. But I think there is a Loom discussion group. So I went to Groups, Explore All Groups, where you can ask a question, and folks who work for Atlassian are in here. So those folks can help answer your questions. But you might just type in Loom. And there's hundreds of thousands of posts. There's hundreds of people. Oh, there's a Loom community. Great. I might click on this and read more. This is another great learning experience. Oh, amazing. And they even list out all the people who work with Loom, resources about it. Lots of great stuff. Welcome to the Loom community articles. There is also this learning button, though, and this is where I went to get information about Loom. Under Credentials, Atlassian lists out all of their credentials. There is a free one for Rovo. I'm just calling this out. Rovo is the AI tool that Atlassian is building. This fundamental certificate is entirely free to earn. It's open book. So while you're taking the exam, you can open up a webpage and look up answers. I helped make it. So just full disclosure, I was part of the, the team that built this certification or certificate. Definitely worth checking out, even just to earn something for free, but also to learn about the tool. Under the Atlassian Certified Associate, though, is where we'll find Loom. This level of certification is intended to be more entry-level. This level of certification is intended to be more entry level and to prove your skills. I have a great talk coming up next Monday with someone named Christian. He helps make certifications and credentials at Atlassian. We're going to talk all about the differences between these. But here I've got Loom essentials and I'll put this link in the chat as well. This is the content we're going over. And this is the certification you can choose to earn. You don't have to earn it. I like to earn certifications though, because the journey, the experience of practicing and learning teaches me a lot. I made all of these learning sessions because I wanted time to learn this stuff. All I learned is by doing. That means I miss things. You've heard me say multiple times just today, oh, I didn't know you could do that. Hey, I don't use this feature. What does it do? So by studying for these exams, we learn more about the tools that we have to use. And that makes us more effective. Now this exam does cost a hundred bucks. So you have to pay to try to take it. It's an hour long. And you have to get a sixty-eight or higher percent. We're going to cover everything about this exam in this series. So if you missed the first video. I'll dig up the link real quick or I'll send a link to my playlist I have about it. But please check out the playlist. Please get hands-on and practice. And the last session, the one in three weeks, I want to say. We'll review everything we've learned. And we'll go over how to take the exam. What is it like to sit down and do the exam itself? So in the chat. Playlist of our sessions. That will help. And then check out my learning site. And if you're looking to get an exam voucher specifically for Loom, reach out to me directly. I can see what I can do to help you all out. Okay, that was about all the content I had for today. We do have another session next week where we'll wrap up all of the official content for Loom and the one in three weeks. There's a US Thanksgiving holiday on November twenty-eighth, so I won't be streaming then, but the first Friday in December is our last one. That will be our review. We'll go over everything. I'll answer questions about the exam itself, how to prepare, et cetera. Between now and then, if you're looking at taking it, I highly recommend you schedule the exam. Schedule it maybe at the start of next year, maybe at the end of December. But put that date on the calendar to give yourself some pressure, something to look at, something to go, oh, I've got to do this. I find if I don't do that. I, I never study. And then I don't do well on the certification exam. Please study on your own. Go play around with Loom. Download the desktop app, get the extension and see the difference. Go find the AI tools. Go figure out how to do the touch up. Check out the recordings, attend next week. Or pop me an email. I'll be happy to answer questions. And also check us out in Discord. Stefan's got a great question. Is it possible to upload Loom videos to a Confluence page? I'd be curious, Stefan, why you would want to upload. It sounds like what you're doing is downloading the Loom video as a dot MP4 and then uploading to Confluence. I'd be curious why. And I'm saying that because Loom is cloud-based. And if you insert a Loom link into a Confluence page. It just displays. It's, it's a native integration and I'll quickly try and show that. Let me go back to my library. Not meetings, library. Thank you. Let's pretend this is a super important video that I love and I want to keep. I'm just picking a random Confluence page. What I'm showing relates to Confluence mainly. If I paste in this link. You'll see it automatically expanded. This is also a feature in the Chrome extension. So if you're using the Chrome extension. You can do this in Gmail, in Google Docs and other systems, but it'll automatically expand. So I don't know why you would honestly want to download this as an MP4 and then upload into Confluence. Because I can do this. Now, you're also asking this question because of file limits. If you're on Confluence premium, your limit is like a hundred gigabytes. If you're on, sorry, if you're on standard, if you're on premium or enterprise, I think it's unlimited. So in terms of file limits, you shouldn't have any if you're on premium or higher. But also if you just paste in the link, it automatically expands. Confluence is bring your own key. I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not following Stefan. Rodney is saying certifications in and of themselves are not worth much. The experience and knowledge you gain studying is where the worth is. This is a great debate that I will continue next Monday with Christian. But it's a good comment. You know, we all get certifications for different reasons. You might choose to earn one because your job requires it. Completely valid. You might choose to earn one because you are curious about the thing. You might choose to earn one to prove to yourself you know the stuff. So it can have value in those ways. What Rodney is getting at is the, the journey to earn the certification will give you a lot more. Than just the piece of paper. So please keep that in mind. It's about proving what you know to someone else who doesn't know you. But also about proving to yourself you know the stuff. Because you have to know the stuff to get the certification or the credential. All right, folks, what other questions on there? Stefan, I'd love to continue this discussion. I don't know if you're in our Discord, but that'll be the best place to do it or please shoot me an email. I just want to understand, you know, your use case. And this is a great way I learned. So selfishly, if you can help me out, please follow up either at robert@heen.tech. Find me on LinkedIn. That is another great place to find me and I'll put that link in here. Or join us on that Discord. Otherwise, folks, that's all I had for today. I'll go back to my wonderful ending slide. I do want to thank you all for learning about Loom with me. Again, this is a tool I just tripped over because we had it and now I really appreciate it. Hopefully you found something interesting. I'm going to add another poll very quickly because I'm just always curious. What did you think of the session today? And honestly, I want your feedback. I want to know how I can make these better for you. If you didn't think it was even okay, please, please tell me. That to me is more valuable than seeing great or amazing blow up the board. Because this is for you. If you are not finding this useful, I have failed. So please take a minute, let me know what you think. Please come find me in Discord, on LinkedIn, on the Atlassian community, in email. If you live in the Bay Area, let me know. I'll, I'll get you a coffee. But please keep engaging. Please hit the thumbs up button and subscribe to the channel. If you haven't, please check out my learning courses, learn dot heen dot tech. And otherwise I'll see you all again next week, if not sooner. So thank you for learning about Loom with me and have a great day wherever you are. I'll leave the chat open just for a minute. Rodney thinks it was splendiferous. I actually know that word. I don't know where I learned that word. But I know that word and hopefully Rodney, you were the other. I might have to add that to the list. But thank you again, folks. Really appreciate your time. Have a great Friday and I will see you all again soon.